Roll call, please, Denise?
Oh, actually, no, wait. Call to order, sorry. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our happy Father, we pause this one more time to thank you so much for this little town. We ask you to lead and guide us in a way that pleases thee. We ask you to be with these council members as they make the decisions that affect us. We ask you to be with those fighting men and women overseas and those protecting their home. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. All right. Now, Denise, ready for roll call? No problem.
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
Here.
Scott Oldham?
Here.
Pamela Samples?
Here.
Dan Swaffer? Oh, yes, he's not on it. It's Dan Rary.
Okay. Okay, so that, oh, all right. All right, the next is awarding bids for the Community Crossing Grant. Who has that?
Okay. Myself, Denise, and Jay Humphrey, we overlooked over the both bid packets. And both companies had everything that was mandated to have, needed to have in their packets. And the low bid and the award goes to E&amp;B Paving. And their low bid was $388,600.
All right.
Just a little bit on that. While we're on that as well, the E&amp;B has started the process of doing some work up on Reeves Road. They've already called in for locates for underground structures to replace the culvert. So they're getting ready to start with Mustang Drive, Sycamore Drive, and that area up there. So they're getting ready to start.
Mike, I have a question for you. For Mike Farmer. Question, just wondering, you know, for, to add a little zing, so we're the higher rated program onto CATS. For the awards, when we do that, is there a way to get like a drum roll?
I'm sure with iPhones, we can do anything.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I can make any sound you want.
There you go. Thank you, Kevin. Next, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, May 23rd, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Okay. Action to pay accounts payable, vouchers and payroll?
So moved.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swaffer?
Sorry.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Miffy, excuse me, I didn't, do we need to, that's when I started, do we need to make, or do the council need to make a motion to accept the granting of the bid or the awarding of the bid, or?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
They do need to approve the bid from E&amp;B Paving.
Okay.
Thank you.
We move we accept the bid submitted by E&amp;B Paving in regards to the award of the Community Crossing Grant for $388,600. $388,600.
Second.
Denise? Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Resol, ready, rev, ah, move on to resolutions, Resolution 06-2022, Additional Appropriation for Community Crossing Grant and American Rescue Plan. Who has this? Denise?
So Sandy told me before she left that we had additional money I believe left over for 2021 that we need to move into this fund. And then we need to appropriate both the matching, our matching funds and the grant funds so they can be in the appropriate count. And then the American Rescue Plan, she said, must be appropriated in order to spend it. So the appropriation is for the first half of the ARCA awards.
Okay. Council action on that, or is this just, do we need action on this?
Yes, please, you need to vote on that.
Okay.
We approve Resolution 06-2022, the additional appropriation for Community Crossing Grant and American Rescue Plan.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to Resolution 07-2022, Transfer Funds and Appropriations for MVH Restricted to Local Road and Bridge Matching Grant. Is that you again, Denise?
Yes. To pay out the town's portion of the Community Crossing Matching Grant, it needs to be transferred to the local road and bridge matching grant fund for the road work.
Any council action?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 07-2022, Transfer of Funds and Appropriations from MVH Restricted to Local Road and Bridge Matching Grant.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to Resolution 08-2022, To Dispose of Surplus Property for the Fire Department, Three Truck Toppers. Kevin?
These are the three topers that we purchased for the Ram pickups that we were hoping to get going on three years ago and been able to get a hold of. So we wanted to surplus these out. And I have looked around, should not have any problem getting the funds back out of the equipment. The distributor that we bought them from wasn't able to take them back, but they said if we went in and tried to order them today, we couldn't get them. So shouldn't be a problem to resell them. And those funds were funds that come through the township contract. So what I would like to do is if we could put those right back into replacing the other three vehicles, that way it's still in spirit of the same agreement.
And those other three vehicles, do they need new truck topers then?
No.
Okay, so. Council action then?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 08-2022, To Dispose of Surplus Property for the Fire Department, Three Truck Toppers.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance on First Reading, Ordinance 2022-05, To amend Ordinance 2021-22 Salary Ordinance.
Question on this first.
Okay.
Is this not the second reading for this?
That's, okay, I was going to ask that because this would be a vote tonight, wouldn't it normally?
Right, Mike, there are no substantive changes in this, are there, from what we saw the first week?
No.
Okay. Darla, can we move this to second reading or pass on the first?
Um, that's fine.
Do you want it passed on the first reading, or do you want it treated as second reading?
Do you have the little procedure with you?
I know, once we do it, and it's having been passed, I now move that it be?
Right, if the council votes to pass it tonight on first reading and then they pass it, that's fine. But there has to be that vote first to consider and pass it at first reading.
Okay.
But this is actually the first reading, because I thought we read it last. I thought this is actually, should be listed under second.
Because we read it and then we tabled it.
Okay.
To be safe, do you want to do the first reading procedure?
Um, I don't remember that, but, um...
There'd be no harm, no harm if we did the first reading procedure, correct?
That's fine.
Just to cover?
I kind of would prefer that you did that.
All right. Okay, so is there council action on this?
I would move that we approve Ordinance 2022-05 to amend Ordinance 2021-22, the Salary Ordinance.
I'll second.
So the motion is to hear it and possibly pass it on first reading?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now, is this two separate motions?
Yes, it is.
So the motion on the table right now is to, the motion to pass it on the first reading?
Pass it to the second reading.
Okay. Pass it, yeah. Okay, tell me when you're, when you're in.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Having been passed on first reading to the status of second reading, I would now move that we approve Ordinance 22, sorry, 2022-05 to amend Ordinance 2021-22, the Salary Ordinance on First Reading now as a second reading.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
All right, we're in the second, ordinance is on the second reading, seeing none. Moving on to old business, seeing none of that. Flood report, Mike, do you have anything to report?
I do not. We do have one of our, I think I announced it last time, but we do have one of our permits now. So we have another one to get, and then we'll be able to maybe move forward with documents for a bid.
Awesome. Okay. Dan Rary is on Zoom, right? But we really can't?
No, no audio.
Okay, so.
Yes, no audio.
Oh, he has no, all right. So we'll have to, I don't have any update from the Vision Hillsville. Does anybody in the audience have an update? Val?
Hi, Will.
Okay.
I'll say something about it. So today, we received hard copies of the envisioned plan. When you read through it, it's most of what, it's already been presented. But for somebody that maybe missed some meetings or didn't get to see the plan laid out, it has pictures, which I always like, and a lot of information that I'd recommend the board read at their leisure. I have three books that'll be sitting in there, so come and go. Much like the library and bring them back. Department heads probably ought to read them at some point as well. But it's good read, it's pretty exciting stuff. And as we push forward, a lot of it is in here, what we want to do, what we think should be done, and this is kind of a, well, it's a plan.
I've been getting a lot of questions and positive feedback, actually, about the banners coming in and leaving town, about Vision Hillsville and kind of what we stand for, so people have noticed that.
And I'll go on to say that in this plan, you'll find where they divvy out work to be done through task force, which will be made up of different parts of the town, citizens, board, whoever. And so that's really good read, because that's how we're actually going to produce the tasks that'll move us forward with business plans and parks and recs, quality of place, things like that. So recommend.
All right. All right, moving on to new business, Water Emergency Contingency Plan.
Yes, so sometimes when there's problems with utilities, specifically the water utility, IDAM is always not recommended. They ask us to put together a contingency plan for if there's a problem, tornado, earthquakes, floods, you name it, you know, they want you to be ready for it. So it should be comforting to know we actually do have a plan and know exactly what we're supposed to do. This lays it out in case the person that thinks he knows everything isn't here. And so this gives you a roadmap again to tell what you should do, who you should contact, chains of command, assumed, I mean, they go through assumed disasters and then what you do about it, and has everybody's phone number and spills and all kinds of things. So IDAM's contingency plan was pretty thorough. But the EPA decided we should have two emergency plans almost exactly alike. So this one is an EPA emergency contingency plan, and it needs to be signed by the board president. So I think, do you have the copy, Denise? Okay, so at some point, it needs to be signed, and then we keep it in the utility office where everybody knows they can get to it. It's not a bad idea, it's just, they made us do it twice.
Okay.
There should be a motion to approve that.
Okay. Any council action on that?
We move that we approve the Water Contingency Plan, Water Emergency Contingency Plan as promulgated by Mr. Farmer.
I'll second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Okay. Next, Fire Department Request to Purchase Three New Vehicles.
Thank you. Like I said earlier, we were trying to get three vehicles going on three years now with COVID and the supply chain, that's been rather challenging. So we did cancel that order because they were telling us it probably would be sometime late next year before we were able to get those three. So we did locate three different vehicles that will still serve the same purpose. They are state QPA pricing. The originals were going to be through a lease purchase, so it was going to be a little longer plan. This, I don't have the funds to pay for all three of them right out front without completely depleting our emergency reserves, so I really don't want to do that. So what I'm hoping to do is get these three and spread it out over a three-year loan. And if I don't have any big issues by the end of the year, I'll be able to pay for one of them completely this year. So I'm looking at purchasing the three over a three-year period if possible.
Interest wise, over the three years, do you know about how much that would cost us?
It was just a little under $6,000 if we did the whole thing. And that's, that's taking into consideration that there was no trade-ins, no selling and depleting, you know, paying it off early, anything like that. That was just straight out.
And the previous thing that we, the truck topers, the goal is to use that to kind of offset some of this?
Correct.
Okay. Council action?
I'd move we approve the Fire Department's request to purchase the three new additional vehicles.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Quick question. Mike, do you know how much the Fire Department turned back last year at the end of the year, round about?
Not exactly, no.
Do you know?
I think $150, yeah.
So I can think from just some discussion up here. Mr. Farmer, if you don't mind, when the Fire Department ceases operations in the year, we'd like to probably approach this again to reappropriate that money back to pay for these vehicles so we're done. Does that work for you?
That works great for me.
So with whatever their turn back is, we'd like to see something probably at the end of the year or the first of next year to immediately reinvest that money back into these vehicles so we're not having the loan out there for more than six, eight months at most.
No, I'd like that.
And just for clarity, you know, it was, I had brought up about pulling from either Rainy Day Fund or General Fund or something, but then it was brought up to me by Scott and others, good point that, you know, when we made these funds and these budgets, gas was 220 something a gallon. And chances are, by the end of this year, it, I would not be shocked if it's $6.50, $7.00 a gallon. So that's why we have a Rainy Day Emergency Fund. And slight drizzle right now, looks like it's going to start pouring soon, so.
While we're on that topic, can I ask a quick question? Mike, I know we've talked years past, and for both of the chiefs, well, and for you as well, years past, that it didn't, the initial investment to put in our own fueling stations and bid out the gas as the city and county do was not necessarily financially beneficial. Are we to that point now? Because knowing what the city and county are paying, they are substantially less buying in bulk.
I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, I can't say for sure we couldn't save some money, but it's not a large amount. I don't think it's a windfall that would pay itself back, maybe even 10 years.
Well, I'm kind of concerned, to be honest with you, on shortages over the time.
Well, that might make it worse.
That way, we're holding on to 10,000 gallons if we have to.
That's what's supposed to be next, is shortages.
Right.
Right now, we get it just with consumer gas stations, is that correct? And?
But we've already got those closing early.
Correct.
So maybe it's time to, I know it may not pay us back in the long run, but maybe it pays us back in peace of mind that we're sitting on 10,000, 20,000 gallons when we absolutely have to have it.
Yeah, when we, when we, sorry, go ahead.
I don't know about the city, but I've heard the county, that they actually, the petroleum companies actually bid to you to sell you the fuel, so it's a lot. So it might be something to look into, so.
Is there a way we can enter an interlocal agreement with the city of Bloomington or Monroe County?
Then, then the problem you get into is, again, let's think worst-case scenario.
Shortages.
Shortages and who's, we're using what percentage and?
Who's last in line?
Yeah.
Right, and again, you can't blame anybody else.
Not at all.
You know, but when you've got a, when you've got equipment that has to be powered.
Our poor planning doesn't constitute an emergency on someone else.
Right, now, could we enter an agreement where we're buying on similar contracts but filling ours, potentially? I know that's been brought up before.
Well, we've kind of delayed the utility building, and it was not a great plan at the time, but it turned out to be with all the shortages and rising prices that we have not built that. But, I mean, we could look into building the pads and putting in the tanks ahead of the building just so we know where, where to put it, and we could look into something like that, but, um, yeah, I don't know.
But even if we appropriated the funds this year at budget time, Mike, what type of timeframe are we looking at having something like that operational?
Year.
Right, so. But, you know, I'm not, yeah, I just, it's, I do have to ask a question circling around the enterprise contract that we had, and they can't, are we still paying a monthly fee on that contract?
Well, we never paid a fee for the contract. We paid a fee for having vehicles on the contract.
Okay.
The planning department has a vehicle.
So if we don't get a vehicle, there's no fee that, okay, so.
Yeah, 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 so, and it was a really great plan at the time, but Enterprise, they're last in line to get vehicles because they, the, the carmakers have to take care of their dealers first. So that's why dealers can get them, and, and maybe Enterprise can't. You would thought because they're so big, it'd be vice versa, but they have to take care of their dealership networks first, and so that's how we're able to obtain them. So we, they, Enterprise is very gracious, and they completely understood and said, someday after things quit shimmering, they'll call us again.
All right. Next up is Police Department Request Executive Deputy Marshal George Robinson to work a 40-hour work week, Monday through Friday, rather than six days on, three days off schedule. Jim?
First of all, I insert there that he is the chief deputy. No, I'm not executive deputy. But anyway, after watching, why am I so loud?
Am I just loud?
You are.
I'm asking myself out of normal day.
I was just reading, this little Jimmy's side, this ridiculous.
So.
After watching Mike and Kevin for the last six and a half years, and the six, six weeks that George and I have been together, it's just paramount that we have, we work together as a team. You know, and I, well, I can see him daily, and we've made a lot of progress with paperwork and things over the six weeks. And I just want to move George to a five-on-two schedule so we can be together the whole five days then. So that's my request. I think I've talked to all of you about it, and you seem to be okay with it, so. And thank you, I appreciate it.
Council action?
I have a question. Darla, does this really need council action? He's the number two.
No, Sandy had asked me about the salary ordinance. And when I said, put it on the agenda for council consideration, I think she thought both the salary ordinance and this request to move George to a 40-hour week, both of them had to be on the schedule, so. Correct, so that could be my fault when Sandy and I were talking, I wasn't.
I've talked to Mike about it several times.
I wasn't clear what had to be on the agenda versus.
Just so we're clear, at least for myself and I think I joined you guys, this does not alter his pay structure at all. This is just the marshal exercising his executive purview to move whoever he wants wherever he wants.
Yep. Thank you.
As everybody can see, I just read what's on the agenda. Thank goodness I don't have a teleprompter and someone with a sense of humor, because we'd be in real trouble. Next on the agenda, Monroe County Republican Party Request to Have a Caucus at the Town Hall. I assume that would be me. All right. Mike, a question for you. What day of the week works better, Tuesday or Wednesday evening for the town?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
I just need to know ahead of time, and we'll make sure you have access and anything else you might need.
Got you. Well, the Republican Party is requesting to have a caucus to fill various elected positions, going from prosecutor to township to everything else on, that's not filled. There's a lot, so I don't need to list them all, but we'd like to have it here at 6:00 on the 28th, which is a Tuesday. And council action? Yes.
I got a comment on chat from Russ Ryle. Public comment for the GOP meeting request, does allowing one political group to use town facilities open the town up to having to allow any political group use its facilities?
This is a facilities question for the, really for the council, but, I mean, I'll, I'll answer it. Any Democrats, Democratic Party could request the same thing.
I'll let him know.
So it's, it's an official function of the party. It's not a fundraiser or anything like that, so. All right, but that's why it wasn't open to public comment, because this is just the facilities, and Mike and, we run that, so.
I'll make a motion for the Monroe County Republican Party Request to Have Their Caucus at El Twill's Town Hall.
Second.
William Ellis?
Abstain.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, privilege of the floor. Anybody in the public want to say anything?
I have something for privilege of the floor. Just want to let you know, food truck Wednesday is this Wednesday, 15th, and it'll be from 4:00 to 8:30 or a little after, depending on how busy it is. And at this time, we have seven trucks for it.
Wow. How's the crowd been so far?
I talked to Carl Thurman today, because he was there the whole time, and he told me he thought there was 100 people, and we have a performer who's willing to perform for free every food truck. And he said people were dancing and having a good time.
Been raining out twice.
Yeah.
So we said, we said we would have it no matter what, and so if it predicted rain, so we had to predict turnout for February, I remember, if it didn't rain, it'd be a pretty nice night. So this is the most food trucks we've ever had, and the layout will be, you know, it's, it's an expanded layout. And so, you know, as long as everybody can bear the heat, it could be a really big crowd.
Okay. Anybody else? Supervisor comments?
I'll start. So I, I told Trevor, tell the board the park equipment is in for him. It is dry, and with much effort, we unload it. And so we are going to start laying out the three places where the park equipment goes. If everybody will remember, we're going to put a small unit.
If everybody don't remember, we're going to put a small unit up on top of Campbell's Park where the original park equipment was. There'll be an expanded unit, a rather large unit that will go between the shelter house and the first ball field, thanks to Marty. And then the last piece of equipment, the largest array, if you will, will be up here just over on the corner of the parking lot. And we have plans to make it a full-fledged park with quite good equipment in it, and we think, we're going to build it so we can keep adding on to it. Eventually, there'll be a dog park next to it. And so, and that's all on this side of the road. So anyway, it's pretty exciting to be able to build it.
Do you have two dog parks now in Ellisville?
We will have after steward property turns into a park, and we're making plans to present to the board now about what to do with the steward property. And it's going to be an elaborate, well-thought-out plan.
We probably should get some dogs in on the conversation too, since it is for them.
Sure.
Can't read it. All right, any other supervisor?
I'm getting a teleprompter, that's for sure.
Nope, definitely kidding.
Yes, I've got a couple things. One, if you're not aware of it, there was two cell phone towers that went down, I believe it was last weekend, and the fire department, police department, and a few other services, utilities are all on what we call the first net system. So within about a half hour of the system going down, we made contact with them. They brought a mobile cell phone tower up to Ellisville to take care of the emergency services part, and they brought it out of Nashville, Tennessee. So it, they drove through the night, got here about 2:00 in the morning, got it set up, and the fire department, police, and utilities and street all had coverage for emergency purposes until they got the towers up. I don't know exactly what happened. It was some piece of hardware that took them both down. The original estimate, they were thinking it would be out of service until the 11th, but obviously it got brought back quicker. The other thing is fireworks are coming back this year, and they're on July 2nd. They'll be up around the school system again. And then the last thing is, since we started the PERF 77 plan, we need to come up with a pension board to take care of that. And I'll let Darla explain the rest of it, but we've got a new firefighter that I need to get some documents signed, so. I've got one now, and then I'm actually got two openings that we're getting ready to start the process for.
Additionally, there should be one for police and one for fire, correct?
All right, we've got one, but one of the officers has retired, so.
The pension board?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, there should be one for police and one for fire, my interpretation of.
There is to be one for each, and the firefighter's pension fund is to be managed by a board of trustees. So that's composed of, just a second here. There's different rules depending on which plan you were in, and if you weren't in a plan and you were in PERF and then you joined 1977, there's a different procedure for you. And basically, the purpose of the pension, of the pension board is to sign applications like the town council's going to be asked to do this evening, and also they are going to conduct hearings on disability and things of that nature. And the procedure for that is real similar to the procedure for discipline for fire and police. In other words, it's a hearing, there has to be a recording, the officer in question has to request the hearing, a record's made, an appeal can be taken, and all that sort of thing. So the town comes under this one particular section, Indiana Code 36-8-7. So it's managed by a board of trustees, seven trustees, two are the executive of the unit and the fire chief, who are ex officio voting trustees. The other trustees are one retired member of the fire department, four active members of the fire department. So that's the super-duper short version, so. It's not clear to me, I have to say, how much of the fund, in terms of money, is in control of the local versus the folks up in Indianapolis with PERF. There will have to be bylaws that are enacted.
Is it similar for the police department also?
It's the, the rules are almost, yeah, they're the same for both.
How do you want us to go about starting that?
Well, probably what we're going to have to do is pass an ordinance or a resolution to establish it, and then we're going to have to figure out who your candidates are.
Did you want to draft that for the next meeting?
I will.
Thank you.
But for tonight, I have a application. Chief Corman brought a name before, a couple months ago. He did do the PERF physical, come back, no problem, so we're ready to start him, but I do need the council if they'll sign the document, the application, so we can get it submitted to PERF. And Darla did speak with the PERF board today, and that would be okay as long as we're still moving forward with the pension board, so.
As long as we get the application up there before the firefighter's 36th birthday.
Which is?
Which is coming up.
We've got enough time.
Okay.
Yeah, if you guys sign it tonight, we're good.
Okay.
We can send in the other signatures later.
Gotcha.
So we need three signatures. We need the pension board, the pension board secretary, and the appointing body. So the town council needs to sign off.
Right. And we have that documentation signed today?
Yes, Chris has it with him.
Gotcha. Kip?
Just going off of what Mike said a while ago, we are actually going to try to, as long as the weather permitting, we're going to try to start moving dirt at Campbell's Park first. It's the smallest structure to start off with because it's going to be lots of guys putting a puzzle together, so. Also with that, we finally got our tractor in last week, so hopefully you'll start seeing some of the side roads that we took over from the county getting trimmed back. So we're getting the bush hog mounted on it right now, so it should be out within the next day or two.
I want to say you guys have been doing a great job on, anytime I see something, an email or whatever, I send it to you about, especially Union Valley Road, those seems, that shopping center around there seems to be a frequent flyer.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other supervisor comments?
Good, thank you.
Counsel comments? I think you had something.
I have a question. Mike, you brought up the park up here, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the whole scheme off the top of my head. The road that's out here right now goes back and tees into another road, and then it goes back further, right?
Well, the road comes in on the highlight behind you.
Okay.
And then it'll kick a right and go down to about where the excavator sits down there at the tree line. And then we've opened up the site for the utility building, and it'll be off to the left with the rear of the building kind of facing the rear of Smithfield Telephone, just so.
And presumably, the road will continue north for a little bit? It will not?
No, I mean, a lot of people have thought that we could, there's a narrow piece of property that goes out and meets Maple Grove Road, but it's rough for a cob back there. I mean, it's four-wheel, maybe. A lot of cars. It's just the same. Uncivilized.
One I haven't heard.
So anyway, sorry. From Ellisville.
So, what I would propose to the council, and we'll have to get the geographic, where one starts and where the other one begins, is that lane where the utility building is going to face that way, right?
Yeah, it'll face north.
It will face north. So the lane that the utility building is on, that road, and we'll have to, again, figure out where the breakoff point is, I would propose that the council name that to-be-built road Farmer Lane.
Negative.
Sorry, not your.
Wouldn't wait a minute.
No, no, no.
Negative.
No.
I had, I actually did have a name for it, but.
So do we.
It's a shorter name. There's already one in Bloomington.
Well, too late.
They named that.
This is Ellisville.
So that's my motion, that that road be named Farmer Lane.
I'd be happy to second that.
I'll third it if that makes any difference.
Could've been worse.
We could make it clearer and say Mike Farmer Lane.
That would be better.
Okay.
You ready?
Yeah.
Lee Malice?
Yes.
Scott Olden?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion, carry.
We got your own road.
That's your own road now. I promised to get you all.
So Jeffy's got his own road, too.
In only, in only a way a man can manage it.
See what happens? You attend council meetings, making roads named after you. All right. Any other council comments? All right. Any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Lee Malice?
Yes.
Scott Olden?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
We adjourn.